Yeah, yeah.
Evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. A beautiful night out tonight. This is a regular meeting with executive session of the Board of School Trustees of the Lake Ridge New Tech Schools, Lake County, Indiana, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, at six oh seven P. M. in the Lake Ridge School Board Meeting Room. Let the record show the board members that are present and the superintendents that are present. Let the record show the administrators that are present. Consider the attached accounts payable vouchers in the April eleventh, twenty twenty five, and April twenty five, twenty twenty five payrolls for payment. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Me. May I have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Mr. Bacon. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to consider the minutes of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five school board meeting. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to consider the minute.
Motion by Mr. Bacon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Me. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to the recognition.
Yes, we have such a recognition by our principals and longfellow. Take it forward.
Well, you go ahead. Who do you want to announce?
I do. I do. There, you got the cameras ready. All right.
Um, so I'm gonna start off with a special group. These are, um, this is our PTA. And our PTA has been so active this year, and I'm so proud of the things that we've done, uh, that they've done. Um, our PTA has done amazing things. Our grandparents' day, very well attended. I wanna say, what, five hundred people? That day showed up, um. Definitely me, children's goal. So, um, I wanna start off with Rhonda Adcock, go and stand up there, let's hear it. Rhonda says it's volunteer service award for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year presented to Rhonda Adcock. Next? We have Daniel Cummings. Next, we have Leah Davis. And finally, we have Amber Garrett. You wanna say that these ladies, um, they while they were running these events for us, they, uh, um, they oftentimes miss the opportunity to be with their own children during the event. So, I appreciate your sacrifice. Next, we have the folks from the Beacon Light Church. And I, I, I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but Beacon Light Church has been part of this community for a very, very long time. When I was here previously, I remember we were doing a thing, but I, um, actually, I think it was a ice step at the time. And we were going around to the different community members and asking them, can you put something on your, you know, outside or say something at church? And I remember I met, um, Mr. Pastor Hoffmaster back in, it was probably twenty-ten, two thousand nine, maybe, um, when we were out at, in that area, asking people to, um, to help us out. But right now, what Beacon Light, the, the folks from Beacon Light Church, they come on, um, I think it was Wednesdays. They eat lunch with, uh, fourth graders, and I don't know if you, uh, not everyone might remember, but last year, one of the Beacon Light people actually saved the child that had lunch, who was chummy. So, um, we're very thankful for them. But then what they've also done is, one day after school, with a group of fourth graders, they will either teach them chen, um, crochet. And they were doing it in six-week session, and then they would have, um, a ceremony at the end of it, and invite the parents to come and take pictures, and really recognize those students for working hard at a new skill, and those are skills that they can take with them their whole life. Um, and so first up, we have Esther Hoffmaster. Um, I think it was two years ago, you wanted to start reading to students and running a reading group with kids, and he did that two years ago, and then that year started out with chess, and then giving that, sir. Thank you. And the Yonkman. There's several other people that helped from Beacon Light Church, like Joy Hofstra, and, um, I'll get to her in just a second. Mike Vanderburg couldn't be here, Chrissy Kreider couldn't be here. I'm forgetting somebody else. And Nolan Allen, um, the pastor's son, the new pastor's son. Um, they couldn't be here, but we have things that we'll send home with you, okay? Um, but I wanted to talk about Joy Hofstra for just a second, because, um, she got us connected to Peggy Hinsley. Um, Peggy Hinsley is actually, she wrote a book on, um, Eight Steps, and, um, connected us to her. She was able to come into our building all year and ended up working, she ended up working with our staff. She gave her book to everybody. She did a training. Um, then she would come in and she was volunteering in two different classrooms. And she couldn't be here tonight, um, but I'm very thankful for her, for all of the work that she's done in our school, the, the relationship she's built with students. Um, and she, she wrote something, um, bravo today. She came last Thursday, just kind of saw how our success groups are going and how things are working, um, now that we've implemented the Eight Step fully. Um, she said, "Today was a delight to watch her third-grade teams providing remedial instruction and enrichment to students as we worked to gain more pass rates than made. Teachers and aides were engaged in small groups. Numbers are critical and has, um, materials to structure the work. I am confident you will see someone for ten to make." So, she is just a wonderful lady, and I'm just so thankful that she was with us this year.
And she's a retired superintendent who is volunteering and giving back.
Yes. Excellent. Um, next, I wanna talk, uh, a little bit about Jenna Reyes, who is our Staff Member of the Year. Um, and I'm just gonna read one of the, um, so people had to nominate, um, our Staff Member and our Teacher of the Year. And the person who nominated Jenna said, "Jenna deserves this award for always doing everything she possibly can for Longfellow students and families. Her hard work deserves to be celebrated, from putting up signs in the area, collecting donations for families and fundraisers, helping with after-school activities, helping in the classroom, cafe, recess." Seriously, this woman does everything. She goes everywhere. I mean, if a kid needs a ride to school, she goes, go get that kid for him. You name it. Um, the list is endless, and this is all on top of her regular, everyday duties, with kind, compassionate hearts, um, and positive attitude with everything to these kids. They look forward to seeing her every single day, and you know it. Um, Longfellow is lucky to have her, and I say that Jenna brings the joy, uh, I'm sorry, the heart to Longfellow. Jenna is the heart. Thank you. So, our last, my last one is my, um, Teacher of the Year, and, um, I'm very lucky, because I've known both of these ladies since they were really young. Um, I've known Jenna, I taught Jenna, um, so. And, um, Natalie Shire grew up behind me and her brother is best friends with my son. Um, but Natalie is the Teacher of the Year because, and I'm gonna read her, her little letter. Um, Natalie's exceptional for her students, her passion is amazing, fantastic job all around. It is the great pride and admiration I now make Natalie for Lake Ridge New Tech Schools Teacher of the Year. Natalie exemplifies what it means to be an exceptional educator, one who consistently goes above and beyond for students, colleagues, and the entire school community. Natalie is deeply committed to meeting the academic and emotional needs of every student. Her instructional practices are grounded in data-driven decision-making, ensuring that her Tier One and Tier Two instructors are both targeted and effective. She skillfully identify, identifies learning needs and adjusts her teaching to ensure that all students are challenged, supported, and encouraged to grow. I'm gonna skip down, there's a lot of good stuff here, but outside in the classroom, anything that's going on outside of, like, we had, what was it, Math Bowl? Um, she was there. She can have a kid on it, and it's for the upper kids, but she was there cheering on our fourth grade, third grade, no, our fourth grade kids. So, she's a pillar of school, of the school's culture. She's an active and dedicated member of the PTO and the Sunshine Committee, working tirelessly to support staff and families. She leads the Field Day Committee, which we have the best field day ever, because of her. It's amazing. Uh, she puts, puts together a great field day. She does it with enthusiasm, organizing a day of celebration for the community that students look forward to all year. In addition, her contributions to the Art Committee have helped enrich our school's creative spirit, giving new forums to communities of interest as well. She's selfless and a believer. Um, and I said, you know, like, Jenna brings the love. I say Natalie brings the joy, because she makes everything so much fun. So, we so appreciate you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Doing our, um, acknowledgement, uh, just a words of silence, how could we forget the Pope? The Pope passed. I don't care what your religion is, the Pope died. And so, I just wanna, I would be remiss if I didn't say something about the Pope. And I had an opportunity to visit Italy, and I, again, I don't care what your religion is, if you go into Vatican City and you don't come out with chills or something going on, I don't know where your heart is, because it's just a world in itself. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge that the Pope died. Thank you.
Because he was the people's Pope.
The people's Pope.
Thank you, Pastor Shirley. Um, those of you that received your recognition tonight, we are going to move into our presentation, so if you would like please, now is the time. We don't wanna stay for the whole.
As exciting as they are, but thank, thank you, thank you all.
Everything you do for our kids. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say one word. The principal, Mrs. Redd. Um, I feel like since she's been a principal of the school, and I don't know how you grade schools, whatever it was that, when she came, it just moved up in the whole school and all the things that happened. It just, it's just a wonderful person to know. So, thank you.
Chartwell is her on the desk. I'd still love to try to be her, okay? Thank you for your patience. I really appreciate you. Okay, are you ready to begin, Chartwell?
Yes.
All right, thank you for your patience.
Thank you for having us. We're speaking with Pastor Sherman. I'm the editor, Pastor Chartwell. Been around for about seven years, um, and been here with Lake Ridge here in desperation, uh, like, here with this.
Grandpa, I think everybody's known me. I'm here here, I've said twenty twenty-two. We was talking early. I've known you for twenty-one, but I've been four years, and I absolutely enjoy being here.
My name is Janet Shaw. I'm the executive staff, um, Chartwell, and I've been with Lake Ridge for a year. A man, I've been with Chartwell for sixteen years, um, and over that time, I progressed myself into upper management now. I've been with Chartwell, I've been with Lake Ridge.
Well, she's been with Lake Ridge for sixteen years.
Sixteen years, the whole time I've been there.
Can you give us something a little different, 'cause if the audio doesn't work or something, uh, functions, give us a little break? But we thought we'd take you through a little video of kind of, uh, what the kids are experiencing and their feedback. So, without further ado.
Hi, I'm Arielle Smith, and one thing I really like about this specifically is the more, like, very, the various different things that I do, like, I do. I do have a place, and they have bacon, or something, um, for my, for lunch. I went to, like, the May Line, because you have, there's so many different gyms, and they give me an option to try things, especially for, like, the overall. That's like my favorite thing, especially when we did Korea and China, because I got to try some of them, and I never felt like, like, you know.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
I just wanna say, I'm making way to continue serving as a leadership leader for the community. To make this retreat, for the entire community, and for all of the people.
So, welcome to the back end of the program, that we highlighted and featured, the team has a really great job with frying, cooking, uh, the food in. Now, frying new things, maybe can't say with the pride, the trip around the world, we'll eat in different, uh, countries, and it's four countries now. We've got four more countries coming out next year, so that'll be, uh, great things for us all.
I know the kids love Lucky Trade, so every month, we do Lucky Trade, and then Fry, and then Grand Fry, and Book Bag, and stuff. So, I never know, so excited to get Book Bag. So, every week is every month. But I like one of the ones, so we try to, you can't say, our participation is good anyway, but we still, like, this is their cafeteria, we wanna give back to them. But that's why we do the Lucky Trade, and they, they love it, and we love doing it.
And then, they are bored in the back, and playing some of the Pearl Air, so we back, we make it to back. One of the things I'd like to speak about next year, that we've done it here, but the taste of the mission. Where, do you think, do you think some of the things, all that, of it, that's interesting, playing some, like, that's a great thing. Thank you.
Anybody have a question?
I just wanna say, I love the mood boost bracelet. Uh, you gave me some at one point, and sometimes when I need a mood boost, so. Uh, one of those bracelets, the Junior Chef Program is amazing. I love it. Thank you, each and every one of you, for everything that you did for our students.
It's funny, you're into the mood boost, so my dad, I got half that.
Well, that's good, then. These people are happy.
Thank you all. Congrats.
And then next, we have a presentation by AVM.
Father Shire, we're staying, we're in Oregon, and I'm a guest. On behalf of AVM, we appreciate the absolute, the, the information about us, yeah. So, as you can see on the board, we're others see a possibility. We see possibility change, and many possibilities. AVM missions, they really does build with listening, um, listening statements. AVM missions, they will make a difference, every person, every day. We believe in the possibility of our mission. Indeed, we're already making this, there are inherent challenges, of those, the fashion that we're, we're fashioning. The challenges, our clients here feel our passion for going to life. Comfortable states, satisfied occupants, and energy efficient building running like fireworks, that's our business. And as you look at the presentation, we see how our mission statement line up, yeah. AVM's mission statement at the top, there is a major difference, every person, every day. They bring a mission statement, transforming education, inspiring lives, powering off. The connection between those mission statements, transform is a synonym for the word remodel. And so, there's the bottom, our remodeling projects that we see going on in Calumet, also in Longfellow, and even over in the gymnasium, that particular building. And even here, those transformations inspire, empower students, and, you know, and it really has a lot of problems. AVM is extremely proud to be a part of the transformation, so those mission statements, we line up.
So, I've been representing anything about myself, I'm sorry. My name is James Townsend. I've been with AVM, actually, I started out with a company called SBM. They were purchased by DC, they were, they were purchased by AVM, so I was grandfathered into a company, uh, since nineteen ninety-four, so we take credit for them. Uh, still moving forward. Some of the key factors, like, to how AVM got started, it was founded in nineteen oh nine by Mr. Boris Rosenberg, with four dollars and fifty cents. So terrible, two dollars and fifty, that's investment. In nineteen thirteen, the name was adopted at American Building Meet. Then, in nineteen twenty-one, first janitorial contract for the Stanford University. Then, in nineteen sixty-four, AVM goes up. And, like, from the nineteen nineties, to the days, Roman, they fashioned a thoroughly as a multi-faceted company that has chemicals all over the world, different. Our team introduction, unfortunately, Mr. Gary Royal, can't use his name, uh, but Gary really is a product of, of Lake Ridge.
Thank you. I'm so happy to have you, good, good, now, we'll see another meeting later, share some of the pride, so, so, we're going to look at some of the work that A B M, books and they read. Now, what you see is, a photo on the left is a house apart, we replaced the door switch, now, before the door switch was replaced, we had to troubleshoot the other parts as well, so not only was the door switch replaced, but the boiler, as well as, uh, other components were checked out, that you had in, uh, this bathroom, like, so many parts, components were checked out, so make sure that we put it back together as much as we can, also the middle school photo on the right had a bad capacitor and low freon, with baking department, uh, took care of that, next slide, that gadget there on the left, that house apart, it is a capillary tube, as you can see, it's same very days, and it's, uh, it was, it had to be replaced, and to the right, the filter there, uh, capacitor, that was replaced, so, needless to say, there's a lot of ancient equipment and components in the district, uh, but they didn't replace them, we, 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 now, the next slide, is at the middle school that I was equal, A B M contact had to be changed, to keep that pretty, so, to the right, the middle school, there was a thermostat in that piece of equipment that didn't be replaced, and many parts are wearing out because of, uh, just being, uh, old, but, we, we will begin to keep it running, now, here, we should see that's a need to replace, at Calumet High School, the district's fan, and so, a P M schedule is what we're really trying to, uh, put together, because there's so many old components across the district, that we have to, uh, stay on top of, so we catch them before they fail, as you can see to the right, cooler fan had, had both, so thermostat had to be replaced on that, and, uh, Jeremy at the top, you see Jeremy, little Royal, and Tom, Tom, here, that, if you will see before in Africa, that's, uh, farewell, it looks a lot better, they changed all the rails and they refurbished it, they are confident, and we look at you do the same thing with A B M last week, uh, and the center stage. Last but not least, these are not enjoyable, you understand, I would have had to have to keep, uh, white potato, which is a business, team A B M, that's all, with team Lake Ridge, team A B M, we are one, thank you so much for.
Appreciate, uh, all that you do for Lake Ridge, thanks for being here, and welcome to the venue, and, um, tonight, we completed all of our presentations for this year, now our next meeting will start in our, so, uh, we thank everybody that has participated for the last, last, six, seven, eight, presentation, and I think we've covered it all, so, now we're going to the buildings and just have some tours, so we thank everybody that participated, thank you.
The public comment, public comment should remain respectful for everyone, there is a three minute time limit, we will not discuss personnel issues or student issues, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, if you find that your questions are confined, we're not answering this meeting, you are free to schedule a meeting with Dr. Shirley, please, Ms. Passaveto, can schedule an appointment, we have Kelly to talk.
My name is Kelly Thomas, and my address is twenty-one seventy-one forty-nine Place in Gary, um, I've been a member of this community for over fifty years, my like husband, myself, and all three of my kids graduated from Kindred High, I couldn't be more than I to bring you the intent, to the intention of my community decisions that I find infuriating, I attended the board meeting two weeks ago, what is the panel discuss their recent retreat? I love feeling optimistic, even calling my friends saying that finally got it right, they used our school for their venue, something they haven't always done, they used chart rolls for their caterer, who knows better how to feed a group on a small budget than the people who feed fifteen hundred of our students daily, everyone seemed to agree they had a great time, even Mrs. Osteen saying it was the best retreat ever, I returned home to phone calls asking if I was aware that they expect twelve thousand dollars on a speaker for the event, and the total cost was approximately twenty thousand dollars for fifty people, I said that can't be right, first purchases over ten thousand dollars require more approval, and it's not in the agendas, and second, our district, according to you all, is facing a financial crisis, so I made some calls, and yes and be, twelve thousand dollars was paid to Tom Island, the speaker, I was told three thousand for a grant, five thousand for a donation from A B M, couldn't we use that for metal detectors or wands for safety of students, and the rest of the general fund of approximately twelve thousand dollars for fifty people, not even our entire staff, unacceptable, you all say you were planning on asking for a referendum, and wonder why our community doesn't trust you, you wonder why our staff leaves and droves, was because of decisions such as these, I'm just wondering, will the people we elect are going to grow up here and stand up, or at least question these decisions, I'm not going anywhere, I will continue to fight for my community, my pair is so big, I'm going to have to start wearing skirts.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Thomas. All right, Dr. Shirley, are you ready to proceed?
Yeah, hi, yeah, thank you. Uh, we're going to move over into our presentation floor, uh, our goal area one, academic, all learners will participate in the chemistry academic course, goal area two, safe, we will provide a safe and clear learning environment for all.
Goal area three, equity, we will provide a positive, inclusive, and equitable environment for all, goal area four, communication, we will improve communication and strengthen relationships, both internally and externally, goal area five, finances, we will advocate to increase the financial resources of the corporation to provide an outstanding school environment and opportunities for our students, staff, and community, professional development, we recommend Anne Marie Keen, Erin Smith, and Ray Lopez attend the twenty twenty-five Indiana Power School, High School on June tenth through the eleventh, twenty twenty-five, in Noblesville, Indiana, with expenses paid from the Education Title II A and Operations Fund, we recommend Adrian Wilkinson and Christina Akers attend the twenty twenty-five I S V, Indiana Association of School Business Officials Annual Conference on May sixth through the ninth, twenty twenty-five, in Fort Wayne, Indiana, with expenses paid from the Operations Fund, we recommend Linda Hobak attend the Wabash Valley Education Center's T Three Advisory Board Launch on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, in West Lafayette, Indiana, with expenses paid from the E L budget, recommend approving the professional development items.
May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, you recommend, question following.
May I have a second, second by Ms. Neath, any questions or comments, all in favor, aye, three a, zero n, motion Gary.
Thank you, now to leave resignation employment.
All new employment to the Lake Ridge New Tech Schools is contingent upon a cleared, expanded criminal history background check within thirty days, and a cleared, expanded child protection index check within sixty days of effective date, Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point five, and Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-six dash two dash one point three, we recommend accepting Amber Downing's resignation from the instructional aid position at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, effective April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, recommend approval of the leave's resignation and employment items.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion, accept.
Motion by Ms. Neath, may I have a second, second by Mr. Bacon, any questions or comments, all in favor, aye, three a, zero n, motion Gary.
Thank you.
New business, we recommend approving the attached donations made to the Lake Ridge Schools Visual and Performing Arts Program via Event Link, we recommend approving and paying the attached stipends to support services provided for English learner family engagement, we recommend approving the attached list of Calumet New Tech High School coaching recommendations, we recommend approving the following fundraisers at Calumet New Tech High School, May sixteen, twenty twenty-five, Culvers, make your meal matter sales for the class of twenty twenty-seven account, we recommend approving the following fundraisers at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, Pie in the Face ticket sales for the Longfellow Elementary Field Day Committee, we recommend granting permission to the Longfellow P T C to conduct the following fundraisers on school property, May fourth through the eighth, twenty twenty-five, Mother's Day gift sales for the Longfellow P T A, recommend approving, approval of the new business items.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion, accept.
Motion by Ms. Neath, may I have a second, second by Mr. Bacon, any questions or comments, all in favor, aye, three a, zero n, motion Gary.
Thank you.
New business, we recommend approving the attached donations made to the Lake Ridge Schools Visual and Performing Arts Program via Event Link, we recommend approving and paying the attached stipends to support services provided for English learner family engagement, we recommend approving the attached list of Calumet New Tech High School coaching recommendations, we recommend approving the following fundraisers at Calumet New Tech High School, May sixteen, twenty twenty-five, Culvers, make your meal matter sales for the class of twenty twenty-seven account, we recommend approving the following fundraisers at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, Pie in the Face ticket sales for the Longfellow Elementary Field Day Committee, we recommend granting permission to the Longfellow P T C to conduct the following fundraisers on school property, May fourth through the eighth, twenty twenty-five, Mother's Day gift sales for the Longfellow P T A, recommend approving, approval of the new business items.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion, accept.
Motion by Ms. Neath, may I have a second, second by Mr. Bacon, any questions or comments, all in favor, aye, three a, zero n, motion Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shirley, we're going to go ahead and start with our closing comment, and we'll start with Ms. Neath.
I don't know how you think, but thank you, I'm glad everybody was here and all the awards, and I, you know how I feel about Longfellow anyway, so, I, really unhappy with everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Neath, Mr. Bacon.
Well, I just wanted to thank the ladies of P T O, and especially Juanda, for all the magic that they do, I think Chartwell on A B M, for, you know, the presentation, I know they've left, but, and the, the crew at Beacon Light Church, we kept them coming out and all, to help they do with our school system, congratulations to Ray and Ms. Natalie, uh, for your awards, appreciate the extra effort you guys do, and what makes a difference, want to thank Longfellow for putting on a great show, and me, and Art Show this week, phenomenal, had a great time, a lot of excitement, kind of wish I was ever one of them before, and I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon, Mr. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Dan President, uh, I just want to thank everyone for, uh, coming out, uh, tonight, um, I think a, a great theme for tonight is the young son heroes of Lake Ridge, because, you know, between all of our volunteers, you know, especially, you know, Pastor Hoffmaster, uh, Juanda, Juanda, you've done a great job with P T A, you know, just helping, you know, until this year, you know, you know, from how, I just see how it grows, and it's just, it's fantastic, and it's, it's a welcome sight, and so, we're just, we're so thankful for that, uh, Jenna and Ally, congratulations to both of you, you, you guys are the kind of energy, you know, and excitement that, you know, we love to see here at Lake Ridge, you know, we kind of hope that you, you stay with us, you grow with us, and that's, you know, kind of, and that's where everything starts, you know, Longfellow is, you know, I'm a Longfellow mom, and so, you know, it's, it's, you know, you kind of just, you, you kind of hope that enthusiasm just carries through, you know, through, through the whole community, you know, through the middle school, through the high school, just, we kind of hope that you, like I said, that that kind of enthusiasm continues to grow through the district, um, Amy, Fred, Charles team, you know, you guys have done a fantastic job, um, you know, contributing, and they love, so, you know, they, they, they know how I feel, I know, so, uh, but just for the community's sake, you know, they, they, you know, they feed our kids every day, you know, and you, you see, you, you kind of see, you know, this, um, you know, the reaction, you know, it's not, it's not the school lunch that, you know, you, we used to get, you know, uh, you know, the little, you know, mystery meats and, you know, you know, pizza, you know, squares, although pizza squares are still, you know, pretty good, uh, but, uh, anyway, uh, but anyway, um, so, but the things that they've done, you know, and just how they've grown that food service program has, has been great, and then James and the A B M team, um, you know, I, I, I have the, the good fortune to, uh, deal with them, kind of, on a daily basis, to see what they do, um, to, you know, keep these old buildings looking as good and as functional as they are, is just a, is a testament to their servant's heart, and what they, you know, how valued they are in the community, um, so, um, I'll, I'll wrap up, you know, just, just the great things that are going on in this community, you know, E L night was well attended, Easter egg hunts, spelling bee, and then, everyone, don't forget, uh, this Saturday, uh, okay, well, I will, I will steal Dr. Shirley's luck, so, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson, this is Trivino, just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and to know, almost all that Adrian said, um, but Dad, I don't even know how to thank you, I, you're a blessing to our school district, I hope you know that, you know, and to so many of our families, and what you do, you know, to bring everybody together, this, this pride was, um, thank you to Pastor Hoffmaster, and Beacon Light Church members, I mean, they've been around for a long time, I just love them, they're, they're like the best people, and Jenna, you know how much I love you, you're my baby, she was my kid, but, having that, so, she's, she's my girl, and Natalie, I'm so excited for you, I mean, I can only imagine, like, how much you're going to learn and grow, like, ten years from now, I mean, you're just an amazing teacher, and, and you found your calling, thank you to Ms. Reddick, and Ms. Garcia, and you guys have a wonderful team, and you guys are great leaders, so thank you for that, and I just wanted to say thank you to Chartwell, A B M, for their presentation, and don't forget that foundation over Friday, and I learn, and A P testing are, I learn is going on right now, A P testing is coming, and I read will be at the end of May, and then over summer, so, please make sure your kids are here, while rested, attending tutoring, and going to summer school, everything that they need, coming to school every day, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trivino, and Dr. Shirley.
Thank you, and good old, both have come down today, I appreciate that, but we got something else exciting happening in the district, I don't know if you've had the opportunity in the last two years to attend our visual arts, uh, programs, they're getting phenomenally great every year, and so, this year is no different, we have a production, uh, on Broadway at Lake Ridge, it is called, we're doing the Play Bill from Annie, Play Bill the Wiz, Wicked, and Play Bill from Hamilton, um, we are so fortunate to have Mr. Don Thompson, Thompson, and he is, um, well trained, I mean, not on the national level, but international as well, he's a gem to have on our staff, we are so proud of him, I just want to tell you, Saturday, May third, twenty twenty-five, a matinee performance that will start at two P M. at the Lake Ridge Middle School, because you all know the high school has been under renovation, it's going to be at the gymnasium, entrance door K, admission is five dollars, family of three, twelve dollars, four years of age and younger, free, so, pack up the team, right here, you don't have to drive, you don't have to pay that exorbitant price for parking in Chicago, just come right on over to Lake Ridge and get this fine production, uh, it has been a blessing, we have, uh, Post Tribune covered us, and then the Gary Crusaders, uh, covered us, so, we're being acknowledged around, so, grab a friend, grab a neighbor, and come on to the program, uh, we'd just like to thank everybody for coming out, what a phenomenal evening, I had the opportunity to go and Uh again, Eric, thank you for all that you do for Lake Ridge, he has really, with the podcasting, he has encouraged us to just communicate well. And he's talking to anybody and everybody that will talk to him. Erin, we appreciate you being here, every school board meeting, and uh Reagan was here, ready on the job, we gotta do that again, next board meeting, you know what I'm talking about. I thank all of you, I appreciate you, appreciate the school board, have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Shirley. To pretty much everything everybody says, congratulations, Jenna and Natalie. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Reddick, thank you, Ms. Garcia. The presentations that we had tonight were also great. Um I just have a little bit to share on Senate Bill One, which is also known as the Property Tax Bill. Um this is the why, this is why we, this is why we will need to go to a referendum moving forward. The Property Tax Bill will greatly impact funding sources for education, police, fire, and many more. Public schools will have funding cut by about seven hundred and forty-four million dollars due to Senate Bill One. This was the most successful legislative session for charter schools since two thousand and one, Brandon Brown, CEO of Mind Trust. Longfellow, the first ever Longfellow art show, and Spelling Bee was absolutely amazing, thank you for everything that you do. Ms. Aspach, thank you as well for doing your work with the P T A, it is greatly appreciated. Um, thank you communities and schools for the prizes for the Spelling Bee, those were greatly appreciated. The E L dance night was phenomenal, the heritage of Hispanic music was on display Thursday, April seventeenth. The students that helped were Senior Rafael Manzo Junior, returning students are Sarah Lee, um and the cells are laughing. Um and there's a Shane Soff and Angelina White, Alicia De Leon, Marley, Marley, and um, it's all that can't be for listening, every new writing, that's horrible. But they all did a phenomenal job, they had great music, music going, I walked in, I heard the music, and I started dancing, of course, the students were kind of shy at first, but uh, there was some great food served, thank you, Ms. Azavado, for always uh taking care of us, feeding us and all that, Mr. Johnson, you weren't there, but I know you were there in spirit. So thank you for everything that, you were there clean, all right, that's the best part. But anyway, we have a great team at Lake Ridge, we have a great community, we have great staff members, and we have great children. Um so everyone, thank you for everything that you do, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bacon, may I have a second? Second by Ms. Neat, this meeting is adjourned.